Seven, Moscow Pullman, KNWV ninety point five, Clarkston, Lewiston, and.
Good evening and welcome to the Wednesday, April twenty-two, two thousand and fifteen, meeting of the Moscow Planning and Zoning Commission. First item on our agenda is approval of the minutes of April eighth.
I will make your approval.
Thank you, Deb. Second?
Kurt, second.
Kurt is the second, all right. Any comments, corrections? All right. Thank you, Ann. I did not find anything either. Just nice to have quality work. All right, so all in favor of approving the minutes as presented for April eighth? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
And abstention?
Yeah.
Okay, so Rob is going to abstain. Thank you. Next up, correspondence. Anything from staff, Mike?
Nothing from staff today.
Okay. Anything from members? I missed a webinar that I shared with you and noticed about on email that I got the time zones. It was in Mountain Time and so I turned in for the thank yous. It was on successful walking streets, which I was thinking of was interesting in regards to Legacy Crossing and the Hello Walk. But Mike, can you tell us anything about the consultant's report? Because I understand that we had an economic consultant who maybe would throw a little cold water on Hello Walk.
You're referring to the report that was given today at lunchtime?
Yeah, and thank you for the tea.
Okay, yeah. I think I had reported here before that, yeah, an economic market analysis had been done Legacy Crossing area. And I didn't attend the webinar today. I believe Bill Belknap did. And so I haven't had a chance to talk to him about what the consensus of the webinar was about. But the market analysis essentially had pointed towards the strongest uses within Legacy Crossing. Were going to be single-story, stick-built, retail-type buildings like Jimmy John's that was just recently constructed. But also indicated that there'd be a strong market presence for residential as well as medical offices and mixed-use developments that were at least three stories in height that did include some type of retail restaurant use on the bottom floor and either medical office or residential on the top two floors. So that was the result of the market analysis.
Is there a written form of that report that we could get? Maybe we'd use it as one of our shared readings or?
Yeah, I could certainly, as soon as the final draft is presented, I think that was today at noon, so I can certainly post a copy of that.
Okay.
Should be available on the URA website, I think, at some point, but I will see about getting the commission access to that.
A link, okay. Thank you. Yeah, it just seems that since we're doing various things relative to Legacy Crossing, we ought to
Sure.
...have the best information we can.
Nels?
Yes.
Just a comment about the webinar.
Okay.
I did spend an hour on the webinar today and it's quite, it was quite good. It reported on eight or nine important streets that have been closed, closed to traffic and to see how they've worked. And the webinar suggests that every time you close a street to traffic, it doesn't necessarily mean it's going to work. In fact, many have failed. They showed eight or nine that have worked. And the fact of the matter is that our Main Street really is edging on, it could have been in the webinar, our Main Street. In other words, nobody's driving down Main Street at forty miles an hour. So even, and there's something attractive about having vehicles. And they talked about Boise, even though it wasn't on the webinar, that Boise's Eighth Street, the two blocks on Eighth Street, works quite well and there are cars there. I guess the one thing that they talked about that would relate to Legacy Crossing is that it's pretty hard to create one of these things. In other words, the webinar presumed that you have a street with wonderful activities going on on each side of the street and then you choose to manipulate it in one way or another. And it's happened in Los Angeles. Many of us have been to Boulder and see those streets that have worked. So the idea of Legacy Crossing's Hello Walk is rather unique. And if a consultant didn't know the history of the university and Hello Walk, they might not get it. And it's going to be tricky at best to make it easily successful. Anyway, that's just a quick report. But I don't know if you can still get to see the webinar. I think it could have been downloaded, but it was, it was worth it. And if we could get it, it would be, I think it'd be worth doing it with the commission just to
Ah, okay. It said it was being recorded, so I will watch for them to post the link. Thank you for that report. All right, so I think with your correspondence, Transportation Commission, Joel.
The Transportation Commission met on Thursday, April ninth, two weeks ago. Much of the meeting consisted of discussions of bicycle parking. There's pretty much of a consensus that there is inadequate bicycle parking in certain areas, especially the Friendship Square area. The city has conducted a tabulation, at least, of available bicycle parking frames. There's a discussion about the possibility of some sort of survey efforts to discover where additional bicycle parking might be useful and how that might be provided. Discussion about the possibility of surveying the occupancy of existing bicycle parking and also perhaps surveying the number of bicycles that are padlocked to trees and parking meters and other such areas as an indication of unmet needs. So bicycle parking is a topic that we'll be coming back to on the Transportation Commission. The other topic that was discussed was the Prospect Place subdivision, which since I'm hearing about that tonight here, I absented myself from that meeting, so. The next meeting of the Transportation Commission will be in two weeks, Thursday, four to six.
Any questions for Joel? Thank you, Joel. Now we're to the point in our agenda called open microphone. Members of the public may speak to the commission regarding matters that are not on our agenda tonight or currently pending before planning and zoning. If you wish to avail yourself of this opportunity, please come to the microphone here, state your name and address for the record, and limit your remarks to three minutes. Oftentimes when I get to this point in the show, I look out at empty chairs, so it's nice to see people out here tonight. Anyone wish to come to the microphone? All right. Next, we have a public hearing, Prospect Place addition, PUD and preliminary plat. Mike, as you're getting set up, I'll just make a comment here. I am on the Palouse Prairie School Facility Committee, which has been exploring purchase of the parcel to the north of the subject property for tonight. I have reviewed with the city's legal counsel and Mike and concluded that I do not have a conflict of interest in the matter. Mike?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. Before you tonight, we have a public hearing, and that is for Prospect Place addition, planning unit development, as well as preliminary plat. So just to give you a little bit of background about the property, in nineteen ninety-four, late nineties, Dixon Hall Development ended up purchasing a two-acre parcel, which was zoned R4. And so highlighted in the center of your screens, that two-acre parcel, highlighted in red. And this image is from around two thousand and one. Couldn't get one from the mid-nineties, and so two thousand and one will have to do. But really, within the zoning code, when you have a parcel that's zoned R3 or R4, you're allowed to put multiple structures on that parcel. So when the developer had come to the city and requested building permits, as long as there's sufficient access and the setback requirements are met for the entire parcel, they're able to put multiple structures, multiple single-family dwellings on the parcel. It's similar to maybe an apartment complex that's constructed where there's multiple buildings, shared parking lots, access drives on a single piece of property. Well, you're able to do that for single-family dwellings as well. And they had constructed some private streets or private drives that happened to be providing access to the houses within Prospect Place Development. And so really, the intent at the time was to create a retirement community with one-story single-family homes. There was a requirement on the underlying zone, when it was rezoned to R4, that the homes be, in those zones, be limited to single-story exclusive of basements. And so the homes on the west-hand side actually have daylight basements, and that's the reason for that. Developers chose to divide ownership by creating a condominium plat instead of a subdivision plat. And so when you think about a condominium plat, generally you think about a large, multi-story building, similar to an apartment building, and a condominium is really a way to divide up ownership. Well, under the Idaho Condominium Act, you're really not required to have it be a contiguous building. So you're able to do like a site condominium or a detached condo in order to divide the property that way. So generally, the condo owner owns the building as well as the airspace. And if you think about it in layers, it makes a little bit more sense. You have the layer of the ground underneath the property, and you also have the house as another layer sitting on top of the property. Well, in a condominium configuration, a condominium owner would only own the house sitting on top of the property and the airspace within the house. They would not own the ground underneath, and usually a condominium association has that in common ownership. And the declarations of the condominium plat determine who gets access to that area, who's in charge of maintenance, things of that nature. So mentioned before, Idaho Condominium Act allows detached condos or site condos, and these are the ones that you see in Prospect Place currently. City of Moscow does not get involved in condominium plat process or recognized condo lots. And so it's really a mechanism of dividing ownership, and City of Moscow only really gets involved with subdivision plats, PUDs, processes that are conveying real property. You have a condominium association, and those are in charge of the condominium declarations document with on all condominium plats. And so subdivision plat, you think of the same scenario where the layers have the ground under and surrounding the house, then you have the house sitting on top. The ownership is conveyed to one property owner. So the owner would own the ground as well as the house. And that's really the fundamental difference between a condominium plat and a subdivision plat as they relate to this development. Some of them are similar to condominium associations. They have homeowners associations. You don't have to have a homeowners association, but many of them do in order to control certain things that the city doesn't require as part of subdivision plats. And those are controlled through a CCNR document, covenants, conditions, and restrictions. So back in the eighties, nineties, condominium plats were a pretty common way of dividing ownership on properties. We saw a lot of them throughout town. A lot of duplexes were divided using condominium plat. You build a duplex and then they divide ownership on either side through the condo plat process. And this was prior to our twin home ordinance coming into effect. So now with our twin home, you can really build a duplex and then put that property line right down the middle of the common wall and sell to single-family dwellings. And so you don't really see a lot of duplexes being condominiumized just because you're allowed to do single-family dwellings on either side in that configuration, and it's a lot easier to get financing from banks. And so ever since Great Recession, two thousand and eight, site condominiums have become challenging to get financing or be refinanced, and that was because of a high rate of defaulted loans. And that's really where you run into the issue of condos nowadays. This was an example of the, one of the duplexes just throughout town. So you have really the same duplex built on these four lots and actually extends, there's a couple other lots up to the north. But this is just a way of dividing ownership. And so these are all subdivision plats. The owner owns the property, and then they own the duplex on top of the property. And so they're able to maybe live in one side and rent out the other side. But if you wanted to sell both sides to somebody else, the only way of really doing that is either doing a twin home, which puts that line here, or does a condominium plat to divide ownership. So that's what's happened in this scenario, and it was pretty common throughout town that in order to divide ownership on different sides of the duplex, you would just do a condominium plat. And really, this is the only condominium plat, and the city really never sees it. We just, it just shows up on the parcel map that we use in our GIS as divided through a condo. So that brings us to the Prospect Place development. It's currently on West Palouse River Drive on the north side, and that's Sunnyside Avenue portion that, this was recently constructed in the last year or two. Eventually, when the two side portions here are developed, this will eventually connect down to Palouse River Drive, but it's currently undeveloped in that portion. You have Anderson Frontier Park here to the west. You have a large supply yard for Idaho Transportation Department to the south. And you also have various mobile home parks here on the south side of the street. Majority of the houses to the north here are all single-family dwellings, usually located in R1 or R2 zones. And so brings us to the Prospect Place proposal, is to create a preliminary plat in order to establish twelve lots and those, create twelve lots, but one of those would be an off-street parking lot. You'll have eleven parcels, which range from four thousand fifty square feet in size to ten thousand one hundred and thirty-five square feet in size. And you also have that one off-street parking parcel, which is about twelve hundred and twenty-eight square feet in size. You're required to have a PUD as part of this development because applicant's requesting a waiver. Minimum lot size in R4 is five thousand square feet, so some of the lots don't meet that requirement. Some of the lots wouldn't meet our setback requirements. And then the streets are private and they don't meet our minimum standards, so that's the other reason for a planning of development. So proposing a PUD with eleven single-family dwellings, which range from size from about fifteen hundred square feet to twenty-four hundred square feet. They've provided in your packet elevations of nine single-family dwellings, and these have already been constructed and built upon. And then there is also three conceptual images. I believe there's two properties that are left to develop single-family homes on. The common theme within these dwellings is that they're all single-story, they're all single-family. Some of them have daylight basements, so it's single-story exclusive of the basement. And they also vary in architectural style and building materials. There really isn't a common theme, but there is similar massing throughout the development. The lots are fairly small, and so you can only fit a certain footprint on there, especially if it's single-story. And so those are the kind of common themes that we see. You also have lots accessed via three private streets. Just looking at the topography of the property, you have slopes which range on adjacent properties in this property from about seven to eleven percent. Looking at the comprehensive plan, land use designation for the area, the subject property's currently designated as neighborhood conservation. You have auto-urban residential to the north, the large vacant piece. And you also have urban residential to the parcel to the east, as well as the majority of the property to the south. Have a couple city-owned properties, Anderson Frontier Park, that's designated as parks and open space, as well as the undeveloped City Park property here further on down Palouse River Drive. What neighborhood conservation means in the comp plan is that they're intended to preserve the character of many of the city's existing residential neighborhoods. Within areas designated as neighborhood conservation, neighborhood-specific zoning districts would be established that would describe prevailing lot sizes, permitted uses, and still allow for improvement and expansion of the existing development. So PUD would fit this description. Looking at the zoning in the area, I said before, it's zoned multifamily residential, R4. You have a small swath of R3 here to the north, kind of transects through the middle of the property. And then the majority of the rest of the property up here is zoned R1, which is low-density single-family residential. The south of Palouse River Drive is motor business zone. What R4 says is that it's intended to provide for the most intense residential land uses permitted in the community. To be applied where activity levels are high and adequate public facilities are available, especially near the University of Idaho campus or the central business district. Adequate transportation access should be given high priority in determining appropriate locations for R4 zones. And they had looked at Palouse River Drive, which is designated as a minor arterial, when this was zoned R4 in the late nineties. So this brings us to a closer aerial view of Prospect Place. You have Palouse River Drive here to the south, Sunnyside, with access to the three private streets and the nine existing houses that are currently developed on the property. One of them, this is from two thousand and twelve, I believe our aerial imagery, one of the houses has since been developed, and you just have really two lots left for development. The preliminary plat that was submitted shows really the same thing that's shown on the previous aerial. You have the small off-street parking parcel here. You have the two undeveloped lots here. You have the rest of the developed properties with a footprint of the house that was built there. The setbacks really vary through this development. You have an original street-side setback of thirteen feet here to the south and on the side. To the west here, this is the sanitary sewer and storm sewer easement here on the west-hand side. And so that's where our eight-inch mains are, right up against the park property. You also have a twenty-foot wide easement that runs right through the middle of the property, and that's where the main water line, city water line, goes through there. And all the different connections for the individual houses all have private lines and they connect to the city main. So once again, the proposed dwellings typically range from fifteen hundred to twenty-four hundred square feet in size. Setbacks vary, but typically you have about a ten-to-thirteen-foot rear yard setback, a three-to-seven-foot side yard setback, and a fifteen-to-twenty-five-foot front yard setback seen throughout the development. Looking at our base density for PUDs, R4 allows twenty-four dwelling units per acre without having to go towards bonuses in order to achieve more. What this equates to, eleven dwelling units on a two-acre parcel, ends up with a net base density of six point six dwelling units per acre. So a lot lower than the twenty-four threshold, and so there's no density bonuses that are required of this development. So these are the sample elevations that were submitted. These are the existing houses that are currently built in Prospect Place. These were the conceptuals. A couple sample floor plans, I think, that match the conceptual images here. And those three private streets are Garnet Court, Pearl Circle, and Ruby Court, and they have twenty-five-foot rightaways. And so this includes a twenty-foot wide paved street as well as rolled curb gutter on both sides of the street. Also have Sunnyside, which is designated as a local neighborhood street, and Palouse River Drive, which is a minor arterial. At the water line, it's a six-inch city main and a twenty-foot utility easement. We also have a little bit of a calculation about common household consumption, and that equates to about one million gallons per year at full buildout. And so we're looking at eleven dwelling units and an average of two point two-five occupants, which equates to one hundred and fourteen gallons per occupant, three hundred and sixty-five days a year, equates to one million gallons consumption annually. Our sewer service, like I mentioned previously, we've got the eight-inch sanitary storm sewer lines and that ten-foot utility easement to the west. Also have stormwater catch basins in Ruby Court and Garnet Court, the two cul-de-sacs that are conveying stormwater into that main on the west-hand side. And also have private sanitary lines which connect individual service to the main. And then also included, your packet is a memo from Dwight Curtis, he's our Parks and Rec Director, and this property was originally part of Anderson First Edition subdivision. And so the Parkland dedication requirement's already been satisfied through that subdivision plat, and it was, it went towards a portion of Anderson Frontier Park, which is directly to the west of the property. So with that, staff's recommendation before you tonight is to conduct a public hearing on the PUD and preliminary subdivision plat. And upon consideration of any testimony presented, approve the PUD and preliminary plat for Prospect Place addition, and we have no suggested conditions. So certainly be able to answer any questions that you might have.
Okay.
Just one little trivial question. When that drawing was done of the houses, why did they not draw the side on a couple of the houses? I don't think it's terribly relevant, but
On these?
Remember the plan?
Site plan.
The site plan.
It's like they vanish into space.
And so I was just curious why somebody didn't draw the, act like the house didn't have a side on it.
Yeah, I kind of wondered the same thing. In some of them, it makes sense where there's some type of annotation over it, where they're calling out. But I, yeah, I
Is it a CAD layer that got printed without its other layers?
Just a little, you know, I'm teaching I believe in enclosed parallelograms.
These are open plans.
Do have the engineer here, so maybe he can answer that.
We'll bring him up to RAZEN, yeah.
I've got a quick question.
Okay.
Was there any need for the fire department to look at this? And did they have any comment?
Yeah, they did look at it. As each individual house has been constructed, they've reviewed that subsequently. So as long as this turnaround wasn't going away, which it's not, they're fine with it. They have all the hydrants. There's a hydrant right here, I believe a hydrant down here. And so, yeah, they had no concerns with it at all.
In other words, backing into such a short thing is not a problem?
Yeah.
Backing in and out?
Yeah, correct. Yeah, minimum width for structures less than thirty feet in height is twenty feet. So they have a little bit more with the rolled curbs on either side. So, yeah, they had no concerns.
Okay. Right, with that, I will open the public hearing and share with you how this process works. First, we will have testimony from the applicant. And then we will take three kinds of testimony from the audience. Testimony in favor, testimony opposed, and testimony of a general nature. And then we'll allow the applicant to come back and respond to any of the comments that were made. Then I'll close the hearing, and the commission will deliberate amongst itself. So with that, and when you do come up, your name and address for the record, please.
Yes, thank you. Susan Wilson, two zero eight South Main Street, suite number two, here in Moscow. I'm an attorney here in Moscow, and I represent the neighbors at Prospect Place. And you should know that in order for us to go through this process, we had to have a hundred percent approval. And that took some time because there's more details than just the plat that you're looking at, but we do. So there's a master agreement amongst all of the owners of the condominium project where they've agreed that this is the step that they want to take. And who wouldn't want fee simple ownership? Because that's really what we're talking about. You have no change to the actual physical part of the property as it is. All they're asking for is to be able to convert it from a condo to fee simple, which is going to require a change of legal description, basically. So there's more to the process than just getting the approval here, but this is, you know, we can't go anywhere without this approval. So obviously, Mike did a great job. He always does. So there's not really a whole bunch that I can add to his presentation other than to just a few simple key points, and that is, fee simple ownership gives the neighbors a greater marketability and makes it a lot easier to finance. So I've had situations that Mike brought up in regards to duplexes where they're converted to condos, and they go to try to sell where they're converted to condos, and they go to try to sell. And the lender sees condominium, and they want a budget, and they want a reserve. And in some cases, I had a lender want a $10,000 reserve on a two-unit condo. And who's going to have that in their coffers? So it's just really difficult. And this is going to make it a lot easier for them to have the freedom of ownership that we all like to enjoy with our real property. As Mike mentioned, Scott Becker and Allison Younger are here with Hodgins Associates, who put together, the surveyors who put together the plat. And I can't answer that question in regards to the enclosures, but I'm sure that they can. So I would be happy to answer any other questions that you might have.
Thank you, Susan. Questions for Susan?
So we're really talking about the land as the deal here, to clarify. In other words, what we need is fee simple land. The houses...
The houses are part of the fee simple and the land. So the houses are improvements on the real property. So when we're talking about real property, we're talking about the houses and the land.
Trying to divide these nine things up into nine things rather than one thing.
Yeah, we're trying to get rid of common ownership. Nobody wants common ownership, right? I mean, it works for some people, but you kind of like to own the property that you're on. And that's what this does.
Just wanted to hear you say it. I'm a little old and...
I know. I was practicing. I'm thinking, I'm just going to tell them it's condominium and fee simple, and that's the two differences. And Mike's getting up here doing the layer thing. I'm like, you got it, Mike. So that works. That's a great explanation. So...
Other questions for Susan?
Thank you. And we certainly appreciate your consideration in recommending approval to the city council. Thank you.
Okay. Come on up.
Hi, I'm Scott Becker with Hodgins Associates, 405 South Washington. And I just wanted to address the lines on the paper, just for clarification. As we were drawing it up, it was getting really cluttered. And so we were looking at ways to clean it up and clarify it. So we showed all the pertinent lines and the building outlines, but when we started to, we did leave some off just so that we could see the other dimensions and clarify it. We had to actually go out there and survey in every corner of the house. So it added a ton of time to us to go out there and survey it. And when we knew we had the corners that were pertinent, maybe we didn't go around a deck or a porch or something, which if we leave that off, then, you know...
So apparently, no one's house is built on top of another person's house.
No one's house is wide open. It's not, yeah, it's not a Quonset hut. So that's the reason for leaving some of the lines on. It wasn't, we weren't trying to hurry it through or skip some steps. We were just really trying to make it a little easier to read and kind of clarify it. If you have any other questions?
Perhaps it's not particularly relevant. I'm trying to clarify the, the PUD has subdivision the 12 lots, but there are nine existing homes and two likely new homes totaling 11. What's the 12th lot?
The parking lot.
The off-street parking lot right there. So it says, yeah, lands of Prospect Place neighborhood in the middle.
And that will remain in some sort of common?
That will remain a common area.
Common area?
Yes.
Okay, under the direction of homeowners association?
That's correct. That's correct.
That's what I figured.
Okay, thank you.
So do these become city streets with this change? Or does it become a PUD still with private?
They're private streets. Yeah, they don't meet our minimum standard for streets.
And so, yeah, who's going to own, officially be the owner of record of that 12th lot?
It will be the PUD, the planned unit development. It will be common to the whole PUD. So everybody and nobody will own it, essentially.
So one more legal entity gets created. Okay.
It'll be the association, homeowners association that'll own it.
Other questions for Scott? All right, thank you. So if there are members of the public in the audience who wish to come up and speak in favor of this, you are welcome. Anyone wish to speak against this PUD plan? Yes, ma'am.
I'm Deanna Eisenberg, 2700 Mountain View. And I just wanted to clarify, the 12th lot, at the very top, my mother Barbara Morgan built the last home, and that's why we started this whole process. And we had to combine two lots in order for her to build one home. So the very top was one and two, and now they're one lot. So I just want to clarify that. And then as people purchased the property, the description of the condominium unit included the property. So each individual homeowner bought their home and their property. It was just the confusion of it being called a condo. And that's why it's so important to change this to a PUD, to eliminate that confusion. Yes.
Questions? I have one, which is to understand why two lots had to be used.
Well, because of the zoning, the city wanted to make sure we had 20-foot on the north side for a setback. And they wanted to verify that we were 20-foot from the sewer line, excuse me. So being the last guy in, we got all stuck with major requirements. But we got it built. The house is completed.
So you're in favor of this?
Definitely in favor of this, to eliminate the confusion that we've had to go through. Thank you.
Thank you. So testimony in opposition, testimony of a general nature. All right. Susan, do you want to come back and make any final comments?
No, I think you can.
You have a question for Susan?
Okay.
If it's platted as a condo plat, then how could the property, the ground, the land also not be, how could it be sold along with the fact that you're building a house on it?
It wasn't really condo plat. So, no. I mean, the way that the ownership was able to be transferred was by the declaration to make it a condo under the Idaho Condominium Property Act. But that didn't actually divide separate fee simple interests in each of the properties. It basically said, look, there is a definition of unit. And I'm not, I mean, it can get more complicated. Typically, it's just a matter of the house and whatever's inside the house, and doesn't include any of the yard or anything around it. That would typically be common area owned in common by just the association. So, and then in their declarations, you have all of the information about what the use is and the responsibilities and et cetera. So I don't technically call it a condominium plat because that confuses people. But it was declared a condominium, and then you have the PUD plat. You have a confused look. Did that not answer your question?
You said that it was a condominium plat.
I know. I know they call them condominium plats. I don't call it a plat because condominium plat is something I think is difficult for people to understand. Because when they see plats, they think individual lots, and those individual lots being individual real property. But that's just from my perspective.
But Mrs. Morgan's daughter said that when people made, did their purchasing, they were getting the land with, it seems like a contradiction. Maybe I'm being dense.
It's not really. But if you look at a legal description for a condominium, it's going to say, Unit 1 of the, you know, Prospect Place neighborhood condominium plat, as per the declarations filed under Recorder's Number X. So then you have to go to another document, and the declaration goes through and defines exactly what the unit is, which defines what the actual ownership is for each of the individual owners. And then it defines the common area, which is the real property around. So the land. That's the legal description you'll get when you come, you know, when you get a condo. When you buy a real property, you're going to get Lot 1 of Prospect Place planned unit development, as per the recorded plat with the city of Moscow. That's it.
Well, I understand that. So how did this happen originally? Did you, did the people get the land with their?
No, my understanding is they bought the two acres. They got to do whatever they wanted to in it. And then, without going through any city processes or anything, all they had to do is file a declaration of condo. That's it.
Plating had to do with where you mowed and where I mowed.
And if you look at it, they, and I mean, I don't want to speak for all the historical reasons of their intent and why they did it, but they got to avoid certain things like what you're going through now in regards to variances. And they got, they had more flexibility in how they wanted to create the development back then.
Mills?
I guess, and I don't want you to insult anybody here, but I'd be a little curious why it wasn't done as a PUD in the first place. It seems like it has PUD sensibility. And one would thought, in other words, there aren't setbacks and things like we would have in a typical lot. And so a PUD might have been a good, and since the guys that did this aren't here, I know, I understand that you weren't perhaps involved. I'm just curious if you had a sense of why it wasn't done. Because it looks like it could have been done either way, as a PUD or a...
Oh, sure. It certainly could have. I can't answer that specifically, but I know that I think all the neighbors have asked the same question. I don't know if Ms. Dixon would like to be able to respond more specifically, though.
If she'd like to. I don't want to embarrass anybody.
I don't want to, but I will.
Name and address for the record, please.
I'm Winifred Dixon, wife of John Dixon. We bought Lot 10, or Parcel 10, to build our retirement home. And then with, we bought, and then we were working with Lon Fletcher and Bill Van Arsdale. They are the ones that created the whole business. So when they approached John, did we want to buy the rest of the lots? John was having so much fun that he decided he wanted to buy them. But when we bought them, we bought them under the condition of Lon Fletcher with the condominium and with all the plating of the utilities, the road, everything was all done when we got into it. So it was Lon Fletcher and Bill Van Arsdale's idea.
Thank you.
I would just follow up and say, from a practical standpoint, without having to go through the city process, they saved on time. They had more flexibility. They could get it through and done faster. Because all they'd have to do is file the declaration is really what all they needed to do to make it a condominium, so they can get to the point to sell the property. I'm speculating that it was kind of the passive least resistance and most efficient financially and time-wise to get the project done and marketable.
So you're thinking that the condo concept was just a little, didn't have as many hoops to jump through as a PUD concept?
Oh, sure. Oh, yeah. Absolutely.
Okay, I got it.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions?
Well, I just am curious. So in reality, people have been managing their properties with their house, taking care of their house, and taking care of whatever they perceive to be yard. And so there's really not, like, I think of the cottages, it had, I don't know if it's a condo or a PUD or what it is, but there's a common ownership of all the plant interstitial space between the buildings. But that isn't the case here.
Well, you have limited common area, which is the area right around each of the houses, and they're responsible to maintain. And then you have the open common area. And so in this case, you know, you have the parking lot, which the association maintains, and then the private roads. So I think they have the monument on Lot 1 that I think that they maintain, at least for a short period of time.
But other than that, everybody's been maintaining it like it's their own lot?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you, Susan.
Thanks.
All right. With that, I will close the public hearing and ask for Commissioner's thoughts.
If you look up slam dunk in the dictionary, they show you this.
Seems like it clarifies a hanging question for people and just gets it the way it should have been done to begin with.
I do have one question. I should have asked, I should have asked you.
Susan?
Has the lots been resurveyed in, at all?
From what the boundaries were in the condominium plat?
Yeah. In other words, we see lines on there now that could be surveyed. I just, were they?
They were adjusted slightly in order to meet building code separation requirements. So, yeah, I would imagine that the engineer and surveyor went out there and resurveyed the set pins. Because usually condominium plats don't require you to set pins. They're just the property corners. When you divide real property, then you have to go out and set pins for those corners, monumentation. So...
Because I just have a, I have a sneaky feeling that those little black dots might be a pin, but I don't know. No?
Do you want me to answer that?
Yeah, sure, Scott.
I'm curious.
We'll take a response, yeah.
Scott Becker with Hodgins Associates. Everything has been surveyed out there. The pins have not been set yet. We're waiting for approval of the plat. Once the plat has been approved, then we go out and set the pins. But the dots are theoretical points that will be set pins at that time.
Thanks.
Does that clarify?
Yeah.
Okay. Other thoughts amongst commissioners?
I don't see any problem at all. I think it's probably the way, it would have been nice if it had been done in the first place. I'm willing to move that we recommend to counsel the approval of the project as proposed.
So Mike, do we need two motions? We need to approve the PUD and the preliminary plat?
Correct.
Can we do that in one motion that Joel just made?
I don't see why not. Yeah.
I think I heard you do this.
Yes. I would be willing to move both.
Okay. So the motion is to approve both the PUD and the preliminary plat. Joel moved, Wendy seconded. Any discussion of that? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Do you have it?
And we'll also need approval of relevant criterion standards. So you would direct staff to prepare that. I can certainly prepare that.
Yeah. I was looking through those. They're way at the very back of our packet, I think. I just thought, certainly you presented on comprehensive plan, consistent with the zoning code, paddle with existing zoning and development in the area, and not have adverse impact. In this case, since it's built, it's obvious what it is rather than speculating. Will not have adverse impacts on public infrastructure, is consistent with public health, safety, and welfare. Proposed development is permitted in the underlying zoning district. Okay. Dimensities are conformed. Yeah. And then the plat.
You can let us compatible.
And thank you, Mike, for putting in, I'm looking at five, the plat is not expected to place an undue burden on public services. Just again, to thank for having the reference to how much water we expect. In this case, it's already almost all being consumed because it's all built out. But just to keep in the top of our mind, the water costs of our development.
So I move that we direct staff to prepare a reasoned statement for our approval at a future meeting.
Okay. Second?
Second.
Okay. Kurt, I'll take your second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay. Thank you, Mike. If you would like to leave, you are certainly welcome to, but we have a fun-filled evening ahead if you want to stay.
Oh, indeed, we do.
Hi, Allison. How are you? Good to see you.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. I'm in a ring, John.
It seemed easier at the time.
Boy, nails, you know, I had to clear a room.
Oh, but I got a sweater out of the deal.
Oh, yeah.
That's Victoria's.
She's out celebrating. All right, Mike, we'll move on to legacy crossing design guidelines, off-street parking, and window opening requirement, draft ordinance, and resolution review.
Okay. So attached to your packet, we do have the language that'll be in the resolution as well as a draft ordinance. If you recall, last time... If you recall, last time, we discussed the window area amendments, mainly for residential uses, or maybe office uses, on the ground floor, and the commission was comfortable with directing staff to prepare an ordinance for your review tonight, and so that's where we are. We also discussed the off-street parking and shifting from the guidelines, the off-street parking table, and putting that in urban mixed commercial, to make that more consistent and clear between the two ordinance is. And so, attached to your packet is really what we've done. Under the legacy crossing design guidelines, the window openings portion, we talked about leaving the 50% to 85% of ground floor facades alone, but adding of retail uses that front public streets and pedestrian ways should be occupied by windows and/or entry doors. And then adding an additional sentence or two to that, to say that the ground floor facades of all other uses that front public streets and pedestrian ways may have less than 50% window and/or entry door area, when not located along primary activity centers in the legacy crossing overlay area. However, such ground floor facade should not have less than 35% occupied by windows and/or entry doors. So that was the portion that we had, we had changed, or proposing to change in the window opening section. And then, just to refresh everybody's memory on the off-street parking, what we'd be doing in the guidelines is striking this whole table that we have here, and just adding some clarification that the vehicular parking should be required for developments within LCO area, provided in accordance with the off-street parking requirements of the urban mixed commercial zoning districts. So pointing people that are looking through the guidelines to the urban mixed commercial zone, and then within the urban mixed commercial zone, we would be going into, right now, it's under the limitations on uses, is where we have the parking requirement. Striking what it currently is, it currently says that minimum required off-street parking within UMC shall be 50% of the minimum parking required by this code, or as specified with any specific area plan or overlay zoning district, albeit the guidelines here, where such plan or district specifically addresses off-street parking. So we'd be eliminating that, inserting the table that we had just taken out of the guidelines, and we'd be changing residential uses to say that 50% of the minimum parking required by this code, as opposed to one stall per dwelling unit. So, what we had discussed before, making that more consistent and a lower parking requirement than what's currently in legacy crossing. And then just adding a reference in the maximum allowed parking section, to state that the maximum allowed off-street parking shall be limited to no more than 100% of the minimum parking required, as specified with the minimum parking required table of section 4-6-5-E5. And so this is just our standard table within the zoning code in Chapter 6, which has parking calculations for all uses across all zoning districts. And so, we would just be inserting that there. So, that's really the crux of the changes. I'd certainly be willing to discuss them, or answer questions.
So, maybe I'm overthinking this. If someone decided to create a parking lot, could they do that? They own a parcel right now, they don't see any development potential for it, so they decide they'll stripe it and turn it into a parking lot, and then, you know, put a meter on it?
I don't believe urban mixed commercial allows just surface parking lots without a use.
Without a use, okay. Because it would seem that the 100% of no uses, it's...
Yeah, let me grab my zoning code, but I believe it's...
Okay. So we can never overpark the site for purposes of supporting other efforts?
It seems to me that, I don't exactly know how it meshes in here, but in the future of a legacy crossing, there's going to have to be parking structures in there.
To get the things that we've imagined.
Right. If we continue to build little stick things, then maybe that won't be true, but if we went to several-story buildings, so, what I'm not smart enough to deal with, I'm not in argument with what is being proposed here, but I'm just trying to think, at some point, if we were to ever get the kind of density in the next 20 years in legacy crossing that we might like, you know, the university hasn't been very helpful in creating a parking structure yet either. I've been a person who have tried, I remember getting strangled by a certain president a few years ago, when I suggested, gee, maybe we ought to build a structure on campus, and he said, you know, not in my watch. But, and maybe he was right for that time, but as time goes by, and if we get the kind of density, and if the campus and the city continue to not sprawl, but, then we need a way to do structures, and I don't know if this allows that or not. Michael, do you hear what I'm saying? I know I'm off the track a little bit for what you're proposing.
I'm just amping up the problem that I raised, which is, I was just going to do surface parking, and you're going to do a stack of parking.
Right.
And if the university were to build on the Sweet Avenue lot, for example, I've heard Art and Architecture had an eye on it.
Right, right.
All of a sudden, they may say, well, we want to build a parking lot, or structure, somewhere else, come to their land on the other side of the creek, but that sounds like we've precluded that.
I mean, the university owns that triangle across the creek. I feel like we need to bring some maps of legacy crossing in, so that we can all look at it together, to have this discussion a little bit better, and I'd be happy to do that in a future date. But I'm just bringing that issue up.
Yeah.
Because it's true that maybe in the near future, little sticky things are going to get built, but in the longer future, one would want to build up, and build more substantial things, and that would, in order to make that happen, even if you do residential, let's say you put in 30 residential apartments, those 30 people, even if they're old folks that aren't going to too many places, they want a parking place, there will still be a need in the next 30 years for a parking place.
And to continue the theme of complicating Mike's life for him, it just struck me, too, that a parking lot in there might actually be a kind of a good placeholder use for a while, while you're waiting to actually seriously build on the lot.
Maybe you build half of the piece that you own, and the other half sits vacant, but you don't, you're not required to, or don't need that much parking, but you still turn it into a parking lot as, as you say, as a placeholder. Later, I'm going to build over that parking and go...
Yeah, I think that's an interesting thought. Kurt, I mean, if you just look, look in downtown Spokane, that big lot right across from the Opera House, it was a parking, it's been parking for 15 years, and now, boom, they're building on it, and they're building structure, and whatever uses there are on that. So that's exactly what it was. It's a way to pay your taxes on money, on land.
Some mothballing.
Before, while you're waiting for a project to focus.
Mike? Well, we do allow it as an allowed use, so it says publicly and privately owned and operated off-street parking facilities. However, any such area should not be used as sales or storage area for mobile homes, trailers, boats, or heavy-duty equipment. So, we would allow it.
Okay.
So we're talking about a pay-for-use parking lot? Is that what you're thinking?
That's what, that's what I was imagining, that I'm paying my taxes by doing that, while I get it together to do, but I couldn't build that, I can't overpark it, because we have a maximum amount of parking. So, that was just free parking for my building, but I didn't need it, but I just built it out there anyway.
I don't know if they have them in Pullman yet or not, I haven't seen one, we don't see them here, but in any city, there's places to go and put your credit card in, and put a little ticket by your, on your car as you park in a space. And it's a way to, again, it's what New York people often call, it's just taxpayer kind of revenue that allows you to hang on to the land, but not be in deficit on it.
Kurt, just ask Mike, I mean, what would happen in that case if somebody owns a vacant lot down there, and says, yeah, I'd like to just put pay parking in there while I wait to develop it? Would that be permissible under current code, and would they get tangled up in the, in the maximums and minimums to do that?
Well, I don't think so, because at the point where they develop it, you wouldn't really have a use established, you'd just have a pay parking lot, which would be open to the public, or, you know, you'd be paying for, so you wouldn't have the restriction of the maximum or the minimum.
So it would be okay?
Yeah.
Good. So we didn't trip ourselves there. Any other discussion of this, otherwise, I think we want to direct staff to notice it for public hearing.
Okay.
Seems to be several bits of cleaning up. All right. Moving right along to number eight, outdoor seating in commercial zones, draft ordinance review.
So we had discussed this at last meeting, mainly looked at outdoor uses, and we went back to late fall last year, with some noise complaints associated with an outdoor concert venue, which kind of extinguished itself with our noise regulations through the police department. But through that review, we had identified that some of the outdoor uses within certain zoning districts were lacking, and mainly in neighborhood business, currently didn't allow any type of outdoor seating for restaurants. And that was the main one we had chosen to look at, but there's also various kind of cleanup from other code amendments that we had taken a look at, and one of them's in the motor business zone, we had added, as part of our urban agriculture ordinance, we had added market garden, community garden, accessory garden, including retail sales. And obviously, when you have some type of agricultural operation, there's going to be some portions of that that are outside of a greenhouse or a hoop house, and they're going to be located outside, and so, we're just proposing to add these to the list of uses that shall be exempted from being conducted wholly and entirely within enclosed buildings. And so we'd just be inserting that at the end of motor businesses list. And right now, changing a little bit of wording in neighborhood business, right now, it says that we have a use under permitted principal uses and structures, retail sales and personal services conducted wholly within an enclosed building, including restaurants, but not limited to the sale of goods and services to the household consumer. So we'd be proposing to do is strike the conducted wholly within an enclosed building from that, so just read retail sales and personal services, including restaurants, but limited to the sale of goods and services to the household consumer. Under the limitation nonuses section, which currently is vacant for the most part, it just says none specified, be proposing to strike that language of none specified, and inserting something similar to what we have in the other zoning districts where we have these outdoor uses. And say all uses have to be conducted wholly and entirely within enclosed buildings. And then, once again, since we allow market garden, community garden, accessory gardens within neighborhood business, need to add that there, as well as crux of the ordinance, outdoor dining areas for restaurants, add that, as well as outdoor play areas necessary for schools and daycares, that had shown up, and some other zones that limit the uses to be conducted entirely within enclosed buildings. And also list parking and loading zones to allow that to be outside for these uses. And so, that's really a pretty simple ordinance, just cleaning up some existing language, and making sure that we're not prohibiting some things that we're promoting, and certainly be able to answer any questions that you have.
Questions for Mike on this one? Shall we move this one forward, notice for public hearing as well?
I think it's ready.
I came across an interesting thing that sort of connects to this. In Seattle, they're creating what they call streeteries.
Saw that.
Yeah. It's an eatery, a streetery. It's a, a city ordained mechanism to take public parking spaces in front of your building, and convert them to seating for your restaurant. So, presumably a somewhat quiet street, and they're spilling the restaurant across the sidewalk, across the tree lawn, and into the, I didn't see a picture of one of these.
I have a picture, well, not from Seattle, but when we were in Morro Bay in January, they were doing the same thing. And the city had actually constructed one as an experiment to see if they wanted to allow it, so they were moving it around the different, in front of the different restaurants, and letting the restaurants try it out for a week, and then moving it to the next one. So I, I think I took a picture of it, so I can try to get it to Mike if I can find it, so.
One of the things that Park City, if you know Park City, it's got this long main street that's real narrow, and goes for six or eight or 10 blocks. And what they've done in the summertime, when the snow isn't around, they build these wooden platforms, maybe 12 feet by 20 feet, and build them and level them, and just put them in front of various restaurants up and down the street, and they become sitting places for the restaurant, rather than sitting on the sidewalk, and they're actually usurping what might be parking on the street. So, I think, I think cities everywhere, certainly including New York, are getting more creative about how to use the public space, because certainly, under the last mayor in New York, they basically closed down Times Square and made it a people place rather than a car place, and apparently it's become...
And Park Avenue a couple of days a week, too, I think, or some days.
It's become dramatically popular. I mean, people are just, so you don't want to get rid of cars entirely, but giving, stealing some space from the cars apparently is working really well.
Neil?
Yes.
I went on to that link that you provided in the email, and there were some pictures in there from Seattle, and two things struck me. One was it wasn't very attractive, the way they had done it. But Seattle parking is not good in the best of times, and I wonder how neighborhoods are going to react to having their parking diminished during, it just, and it may not be an issue that we would have to deal with here, but things can get pretty ugly over there with parking. So, losing it during a time that might be peak parking time, I don't know, just...
Great. I must not have scrolled or something, and, because I didn't see, I read the opening part maybe, and didn't go to the next page or something. Thank you. We are on to number nine, the 2014 citizens survey review.
My how time rolls by. Seems like we were just doing this about 45 minutes ago.
So the results are in, from the 2014 citizen survey, I think Jen had just presented these to council this last week. And just to give you a little bit of overview, she goes through kind of the background, how this is our seventh biannual citizen survey, so it happens every couple of years. I think it started in 2002 or 2004, it's in... It's intended to assess overall quality of life, city services, and it also reached out to citizens who don't regularly interact with city government. Also divided into seven geographic sectors of the community, so we can track percentages for different areas of town and response rates. And we also send it out to 1,200 households every year, and they're randomly selected, geo-coded. And it's direct mailed, pre-survey announcement, postcard gets sent out, and then we have the survey tool that shows up a few weeks later. We use a five-point Likert scale, which converts it into a 100-point scale for the responses. We've had the standard city questions that we ask every year. We also have commission and task force questions, which in the past, I think they've allowed maybe three or four, but of the last couple, they've restricted it to two. And so we had asked two questions this time, and most other commissions utilize their two questions. Also asked some typical demographic questions, as well as some open-ended comment questions at the end of the tool. So when looking at city, standard city service results, once again, we scored high on quality of life, pretty much remains consistent throughout the years, a score of 84, which is remarkably high when you look at all the scores of the other services. The quality of people's neighborhoods, pretty high as well, 78. So these are tracked over the years, starting in 2002 and running all the way through 2014 there. So had a slight hiccup there in the beginning, but it looks like, for the most part, we've stayed pretty consistent throughout the years.
Mike, is the very first bar, the leftmost one, the national average? If I'm reading the...
It is, yeah. So that's the national average, yep.
Okay, so consistently standing above that.
Yeah, we're about 24 points above the national average, which is remarkable. And that only, it shows up in, so we only have the national average for the place to live. We also have...
That's not my problem.
...place to retire and place to raise children. And so those are all really high. So place to raise children is 85, national average is 60, so 25 there. We don't have the national average for place to live, but we're scoring high there as well. And a place to retire, looking at the national average somewhere around 50, and we're at 70 this year. So pretty high marks. Characteristics as they relate to Moscow, overall appearance of the city, have about an 8% change. So these are all the ones that have really gone up within the last year. Quality K through 12 schools in Moscow, highest was 2012, a score of 71. 2014, we scored a 70. Opportunities to attend cultural activities, about a 78, so that's going to be the highest this last year. Shopping opportunities actually gone up by about 11%, so we're getting better there. Appears to be getting better on the air quality as well. So 2012 scored 70, and so this year we have 75. Also going up on recreation opportunities, I think this is the highest score that we've had this last year. Went up from 41 in 2010. Also affordable housing, about middle of the road, about 51 here. 2002, we had 53. The lowest was 2004, where we scored a 58. So a little bit of a change there. Openness and acceptance of community towards people of diverse backgrounds still remain pretty high. This is the highest score that we've had. Actually bumped up about 18%, so it's a good thing. And then we rate safety, violent crimes, fires, property crimes, as well as the safety walking alone at night. And then we divide that into in your neighborhood, in downtown areas, in city parks outside your neighborhood, or with current levels of street lighting. And so they all rank pretty high. I think we have one of the highest tied with 2002 as far as safety of violent crimes. Scored an 88 on that. Fires, 84. Property crimes, 76. All ranked pretty high in the safety of walking alone at night. In your neighborhood, people feel really safe, 86. Downtown areas, 83. It goes down a little bit with city parks outside your neighborhood down to 71, and then with current levels of street lighting, 67.
Does that mean people are happy with the current levels of street lighting, or what does that mean?
I think they feel, so it's safety walking alone at night, and so they feel a little less safe walking under the current levels of street lighting, maybe in another neighborhood than they would walking in their own neighborhood or in downtown areas where it may be a little bit more lit, and they're maybe more familiar in their neighborhood than they are just walking in other areas with the current level of street lighting. So the most important problems in Moscow that were identified are alcohol abuse, drug abuse, and domestic violence came in at the top. All the other ones that were ranked as not a problem or a minor problem ended up being taxes, housing, buildings, growth, traffic, crime, and loitering youth.
Mike, what does growth mean? I mean, is it lack of growth or too much growth?
I don't know that it's specified. I think it just, you probably have some people that don't think there's enough growth, and some people that think there's too much growth. But it's just, you know, you have just the name listed there, and it really doesn't specify in the citizen survey. Some people just think growth's a problem, whether it be too much or too less.
Okay.
So we have population, business, retail, as well as jobs growth. So population growth came in pretty low. Business retail growth, about 50%. People think it needs to be a little bit higher. And jobs growth ended up coming in a little bit low this year as well. Frequency of service use. So you have a scale at the bottom, says blues once, never, the reds twice, greens three to 12 times, the purple violet is 13 to 26, and blue is greater than 26 times. Visited the library, you have a few, quite a few people, 40% that once or never participated at a rec program activity, kind of middle of the road, three to 12% or three to 12 times, you had about 25%. But a high portion, 48% that scored once or never. Visited a park, you have quite a few people that did. So three to 12 times, scored about 40%. And then people who used it greater than 26 times comes in at about 22%. So you've got quite a bit of park use. And then you get to recycled. People that recycled, I guess, over the last year is really high. 67% said they recycled greater than 26 times over the last year. Volunteerism, down. You have once, never, is about half the population that was surveyed, and then the rest is distributed amongst twice, three to 12, 13 to 26, and greater than 26, you actually had about 18% of the surveyed population say they volunteered that much. Visited the 1912 Center, 47% said they've, you know, did it once or never, and then you have a little bit of middle-of-the-road answers, you know, twice, and then three to 12 is about 26%, so a little bit of activity there. Quality and value of service, looking at a thing that probably matters the most to us, planning and zoning. We were pretty low at one point, and we've brought that up the last three citizen surveys, I think to our highest mark, which happened to be in 2012. And now it's at 55, so we dropped a couple of points, but you're looking at the standard deviation is 5%. So I think we're still plus-minus 5%, so we're still in that category. So we're still maintaining, but you think about the scores that maybe directly relate to planning and zoning for the quality of life, quality of the community, and those all score 84%, but then you have the disparity with planning and zoning at 55%. So that's always the one that scratched my head a little bit on.
I was just thinking it was Art did a better job than me.
I think we say no more than anybody.
Well, it's probably because everybody has a different perception about what planning and zoning means. And they, you know, you have a high response that are either don't know, so that, it always shows up. You have 30, 40% of the people that rank us that really don't know what we do, or the people that are involved, you know, maybe it's planning and zoning here, maybe it's planning and zoning under community development, and maybe they just had something, you know, rezoned they didn't like, or something else happened. So it's hard to really gauge whatever body thinks of when they think of planning and zoning, so.
Or rather to restate that, we make decisions that somebody's going to disagree with, probably in the top three or four of city commissions or departments.
So it is surprising how planning and zoning probably passes on 85 or 90%, at least 90% of the things that come to us. But the two things that we don't pass, people remembered that forever. And so that, I think that plays into it just a little bit, because, you know, we'll be remembered forever for saying, for being less receptive to Walmart than some people thought we should be. And that seems to, I mean, that's almost, I was a child then, and the people are still mentioning it.
It almost doesn't seem like this is about commissions, though, when you look at all the other categories. It's really more about, you know, there may be people who don't think Moscow should grow one more inch towards the east, and so they say, "No, we don't like the planning." There may be people who live in the east who are ticked off because they can't get to the west. And, you know, I don't think it's about commissions. I think it's about perception of planning, period.
It's a version of the growth question.
And it's like being on the school board. I mean, you know, you can never win with children. So, I mean, somebody's always going to be upset about something, but I don't think it's about, it doesn't seem, when you look at snow removal and street lighting, that they would be thinking about this commission particularly. So I don't think you have to worry about your leadership. I could be wrong, but...
Please for the next slide.
Yeah, okay, next slide.
Overall direction of the city. Pleased with overall direction the city is taking. Looks like we scored the highest, and that was the first of the graphs there, all the way up to 60. It was down in about 20, 2006, 2008. We probably hit the lowest there, and it's slowly been climbing over the last three citizen surveys. As well informed on major issues within the city, it's about even there. City government welcomes citizen involvement, actually scored the highest here, starting in about 2004. It was down below 60, and now we're all the way up to almost 70 with the score on this. So we just keep getting better as far as involving citizens. City considers citizens' opinion and decisions, also scored the highest that we've had ever here as well. And so it's just kind of the continual uptick on a lot of these questions. And well informed about city process and procedures. They've been pretty stagnant over the years, kind of go up and down over that standard deviation. City provides adequate access to public information related to government activities. And tied about 2012, we got about the same score there, a little over 60 on that. That brings us to the commission questions. I just thought I'd touch on a couple. Parks and Recreation, they had asked about the playfield and park support, asking that I would support the use of public funds to develop playfields for organized activities. And 2014, you had about, close to 70% of the respondents. Obviously, in 2012, that was prior to the Joseph Street Playfields project, and so you had quite a bit of overwhelming support on that. Now it's gone back down since we've got that project going. And I would support improvements of undeveloped parks. And so I think it's just the effect of the Joseph Street ball fields playing into that decision. So it peaked in 2012, and now it's gone down to about what it was before in 2010. Brings us to P&amp;Z's question. So we had asked, "City of Moscow should consider the issue of climate change as it plans for the future." We ended up getting responses of 48% strongly agree on that, had about 24% people be neutral, and then about 22% disagree or strongly disagree. So looks like we have about double, more than double of people that actually strongly agree or agree with that statement than those that disagree or strongly disagree. Then we asked some kind of scenario questions about the types of neighborhoods or environments they'd like to live in. And so we asked, "A neighborhood that includes a mix of housing types, stores and businesses that are easy to walk to versus a neighborhood that primarily single-family houses only, and you have to drive to stores and other businesses?" And they were pretty equal. You had 52% with a mix of housing types, so it's a little bit more than a single-family where you have to walk to, which scored 43%. And then we asked, "Houses with smaller yards, and you would have to short commute to work. It is easy to walk to school, stores and restaurants." Scored 51% versus houses with larger yards, and you would have to have a longer commute to work, and you would have to drive to parks, playgrounds, and recreation areas. Scored at 42. So not overwhelming, but definitely higher than having to drive to all these amenities. The next one we compared was housing with small yards and where it's easy to walk to school, stores and restaurants versus own or rent detached, single-family house and have to drive to shops and restaurants and have a longer commute to work. Still a little bit higher for the houses with small yards, easier to walk to schools and stores and restaurants. Then we have a little bit more of a disproportionate share. The next question, we asked, "Own or rent an attached, single-family home where you share one or more common walls, townhouse, condominium, where it is easy to walk to shops, restaurants, and have a shorter commute to work." Ended up 32% of people wanted that. Or own or rent a detached, single-family house and have to drive to shops and restaurants and have a longer commute to work. So instead of a, more of a twin home, townhouse, condo environment, they overwhelmingly decided that a single-family house where you have to drive and can't walk would be more desirable than the townhouse, twin home, or condo, so.
Yeah, you can see how, I mean, people who want to come to the University of Idaho or move to Moscow are, have made that choice already to be in a place like this. And because we don't have any traffic, in other words, already Boise's got a deal where if you're living out in Kuna where you can afford a house, it's a 45-minute drive in the morning back to town. We don't have that, so people are, wouldn't, I mean, it's a kind of a self-fulfilling question, isn't it?
Yeah.
And...
Yeah, I mean, around here, a longer commute might be 15 minutes instead of five.
Well, and the only people that have long commutes are people who just still want to live in Lewiston or on top of Moscow Mountain, and they made that choice, and so they wouldn't complain about that commute for sure. Yeah. It's really understandable, and when we talk about, I think that's a trap I've gotten myself into as I've taught urban, focusing on cities and thinking about urban things, and it's almost a silly thing to find yourself out in Idaho talking about urbanism. I don't know if Wendy feels the same way or not, but we both...
We do have rush minute.
Right. So it's an interesting issue, and yet our students, of course, can't get a job here, so they have to go... so they have to go to Seattle, and then they immediately realize what we've been talking about.
Yeah. Another thing, Mike, kind of a good omen for the legacy crossing thing, is that a third of people are willing to do townhouse condominiums so long as they're close in. I mean, that's economically viable proportion.
That's a good observation. Thank you to them.
I'd venture to say, if you had a really attractive, I think that's probably what's missing in the market these days, is a really higher-end, maybe a condo loft or townhouse, twin home development, where you have, you know, maybe the cost that it would take for a single-family dwelling and a median housing price of two-hundred-and-twenty-five or two-hundred-and-fifty, you know, then you may sway some more people into doing that, so. And the last one we had compared was, a neighborhood with well-connected sidewalks and bicycle facilities such as bike lanes and separated pathways versus a neighborhood without well-connected sidewalks and bicycle facilities such as bike lanes and separated pathways. So, pretty much overwhelming support for well-connected sidewalks and bike lanes and pathways. So, we're doing something right on that.
Something to remember when we see cul-de-sacs, which start to break up that well-connectedness.
Yeah, it is. And I was driving on a street over, just on the other side of, lane, no, anyway, a street that I don't normally drive on, one of those streets that fortuitously doesn't have any sidewalks. And here was a father out in the middle of the street, his kids have no place to play, no place to ride their bike, and little tiny ones, and I could just, you know, you can't let your kid go out there, and so he was out there managing the two children as I'm driving by, and I'm down at, you know, ten miles an hour, trying to be very, show respect for those kids, but here's the little tiny ones in little plastic vehicles with no sidewalk to ride on. So, you feel sorry for that era of our life, when we didn't think sidewalks were ever going to be necessary.
Are they free-range children, or?
Free-range.
They learn to be.
It's the beauty of Moscow, that you can drive a bicycle down the middle of many of our streets quite safely.
And then brings us to the Sustainable Environment Commission. They had asked whether or not they support development of single-stream recycling pickup service, and you had pretty much overwhelming support for single-stream recycling in town. But when you got, I'd be willing to pay five dollars per month, a little bit different of a story, had about forty-six percent would be willing to do that, but then you had a little bit higher numbers, thirty-six percent disagreed, or be willing to pay five, you know, up to five dollars a month for single stream, so.
Dollar fifty-two.
There you go.
His rack's got to be.
It is surprising how busy the recycling place is, and I'm never sure whether it's economically valuable or not, but I'm surprised at how many of us pick through our stuff and go there. I mean, I don't go there except there's always six people fighting for the parking place, so it's pretty, it's popular.
Transportation Commission had asked that I support the installation of enhanced bicycle facilities such as shared lane, I think the sharrows, bike lanes, or removal of some parking on Third Street east of downtown. So, create more of a bicycle-friendly corridor, commuting corridor, Third Street east of Maine there. And you had about fifty-four percent strongly agree with that statement, thirty-two percent just remain neutral, and you had thirteen percent disagree. So, pretty overwhelming for strong support for that, and then just a few neutral. And then they asked kind of a chart here. The highest scores were maintaining and improving roadways were kind of the most important, followed by providing a continuous sidewalk network was important as well. And then street crossings at US 95 for all users, and crossings at State Highway Eight for all users came in towards the top this year. And I just wanted to briefly go over the demographic information. Employment, not employed, thirty-two percent, so probably attending a local university in town. Had part-time employment, nineteen percent of the respondents were part-time, and then forty-eight percent of the respondents were full-time. Enrolled at a local university, eleven percent were attending, three percent attended part-time, and eighty-five percent are not currently attending a local university. Main method of transportation is motorized vehicle, which comes in at seventy percent, and broken down from there is twenty percent do ride with others, and fifty-one percent do not ride with others. And then bicycle transportation makes up seven percent, as well as walking makes up another seven percent, and then some work at home or do other type of riding or driving. Residency, housing and household, so looking at the residency in Moscow, the larger portion is more than twenty years. So, you have about forty percent, forty-one percent of people that have been here over twenty years of the respondents. And the next, and the other ones are pretty much distributed proportionally, less than two, two to five, six to ten, and eleven to twenty, all scored within that thirteen to fifteen percent range. Housing and household, you had sixty-five percent respondents that lived in detached one-family house, detached from any other houses. You had twelve percent lived in duplexes or townhouses, sixteen percent in apartments or condominiums, or five percent in mobile home. There's probably your thirty percent there for duplexes or apartments and condos in our question. Education and income, one percent did not have a high school diploma, six percent only had a high school diploma, thirteen percent had some college but no degree, and then seven percent had associates, thirty-five percent have bachelors, and thirty-six percent have graduate or professional degrees. So, probably about what you'd expect for the cross-segment of Moscow. Looking at income, the highest category was fifty to ninety-nine thousand, gross income annually.
Is that individual or family, Mike?
I would say that's household income.
Household.
Yeah.
Very, median income is sixty-one, so.
Race and/or ethnicity, eighty-nine percent white or Caucasian, and then you had a few, two percent Asian, one percent black or African-American, one percent Hispanic, so predominantly white or Caucasian respondents. Age categories, distributed fairly evenly, eighteen to twenty-four years of age, had probably the lowest response rate of seven percent. The category of twenty-five to thirty-four, sixteen percent. And then another low category was nine percent, and that was forty-five to fifty-year-olds. And probably the highest is thirty-five to forty-four, or fifty-five to sixty-four. So, pretty proportionate across all age categories there. And then we had more women fill out surveys than we did men, so we had fifty-seven percent female and forty-one percent male. And that's it.
Okay, thank you, Mike.
Yep.
Anything else for the good of the order? So, I found some readings, for shared readings, that were on walking, walkability. That seemed like a reasonable topic, given some of the comments in here about walking.
Yep.
Okay, we'll work on getting those up for you. Probably read them for a month from now.
Is that it? You have a minute, Poketown?
Okay, for a minute.